All members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting. The reading of the call will be omitted. We have to help us begin tonight. An honor guard from the Greenwich Girl Scouts, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Greenwich Girl Scouts. So if everyone please rise.
Color Guard, prepare to present the colors. On March 12th, 1912, Juliette Gordon Low registered the first Girl Scouts in Savannah, Georgia. In honor of this important date, Girl Scouts of Connecticut Greenwich will perform tonight's Color Guard. Color Guard, advance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My name is Charlotte Merritt, and I have been a Girl Scout through 50303 North Street School for five years. Girl Scouts are unleashes to go-getter, innovator, risk-taker, leader in every role, preparing her for a lifetime of leadership. Girl-led, expert-approved, volunteer-supported, Girl Scouts help girls discover our strengths and change the world. Girls of all abilities, interests, and backgrounds, from kindergarten through high school, are welcome. To find out more, please visit our cookie booth in the lot. Have a great meeting. Color Guard, dismissed.
Thank you very much, girls. Job well done. Good evening, my name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. Welcome to our March meeting. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Fred Camillo, our First Element, would like to bring us up to date on some important issues.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, RTM members and guests. Brief update on the COVID-19 issue here, from the macro to the micro. As it decelerates in China, it accelerates in the United States. Here in Connecticut, we had a conference call with Governor Lamont at 5:00. He reported that there were 56 people tested, two were positive. He is suggesting, but not mandating, that future public gatherings of over 100 people be canceled. They're not mandating that yet. We are assessing and reassessing that on many levels. He is banning out-of-state travel by state employees. And he talked about the two groups, demographics, that are really being affected most by this, people over 60 and those who have pre-existing conditions. The lead agency at the state level is the Department of Public Health. Now to Greenwich. The lead department is Public Health, Director Caroline Basely, who is working in tandem with Greenwich Hospital. Greenwich Hospital did test today 25 people with prescriptions from their doctors. They had flu-like symptoms. They also cleared 150 spaces at the hospital for testing. And so we had to procure another 150 spaces elsewhere so that staff could park there. We will be updating everybody as things progress. Town hall and other buildings are being disinfected, all touchable surfaces daily. Public notices are going up in all our buildings. Personally put some out this weekend. But also, you know, one mentioned DPW and Building Construction Management was a little ahead of the curve on this. They started doing this until November. But we just want, you know, people to know, not to panic, but to know that, yeah, this is going to get worse, and then it's going to get better. It's going to decelerate, and then it's going to be gone. But in the meantime, we will be preparing contingency plans. We will be meeting again at 11:30 or apartment heads on Wednesday to update the existing contingency plans, to be updated with this virus, because there are contingency plans already in place. But just use exercise question, common sense. If you feel sick, please stay home. If you are sick, do not run to the doctor. Call first. Avoid large crowds. And space it out a little bit. And again, treat every surface, every touchable surface, as being possibly contaminated, which we should be doing anyway, right? Touch money, ready to go home, you wash your hands. Do the same thing here. Just wash your hands, and if you don't feel well, stay home and call your doctor. We'll get through this. It's going to be okay, but we will be updating you on our plans as we go forward. So I want to thank you for allowing me to update.
Thank you. Thank you for that important information. Cheryl Moss, Chair of District Eight.
I'm here tonight to say a few words about Caroline Ranno. She was born in Greenwich on May 24th, 1938, to Angela and Anna Pucci, and was 81 years old when she passed on February 9th, 2020. Carol, as she was known outside her family, attended Greenwich schools, graduated from Greenwich High School in 1956. Carol and her husband George raised their family here in town, and she was very involved in the community. PTA President in North Myannis, preschool teacher, and she was always volunteering at Eastern, Greenwich High School, Girl Scouts, and our children's sports teams. Carol served on the RTM from 1988 to 2005. She served as a delegate on the Rules Committee, alternate of Finance, and then delegate to Finance. She was District Eight Chair from 1994 to 2001. Although I did not know Carol myself, Mike Mason tells me she became District Eight Chair on his very first term on the RTM. Her encouragement and personal time investment with all the new district members was truly amazing. Her dedication and pushing the 26 members of District Eight to do your homework and respect those who have different opinions made the district meetings long, but rewarding and enjoyable. Many RTM members from the years Carol was Chair went on to other boards and town positions which she inspired. After Carol's retirement from the RTM, you had to be ready when you ran into her to give her an update on what's going on, and you had better have done your homework. Carol is fondly remembered as a great neighbor, public servant, excellent baker, and friend that will truly be missed. She is survived by her husband George Ranno, her loving children, and her cherished grandson. We are thankful for Caroline's many contributions of time and dedication to our community. Mr. Moderator, we ask that this tribute to Caroline Ranno be included in the minutes and that an official copy be sent to her family.
Will the members please rise and join me in a moment of silence in honor of Caroline For the last five years, we have been missing what I view as very valuable resource of not only town history but RTM institutional memory, and that is an accessible copy of the recordings of these meetings. And we, the Moderator Pro Tem and I, asked Kim Spizano, our Assistant Clerk, to take that on as a project, and we are very thankful and happy to report that Kim was very successful. All of those recordings, going back to 2004 when we first started September, have been found and hopefully in the near future will be made available through Greenwich Community Television. So we thank Kim for her efforts. All right. Alexis Vulgaris, our Moderator Pro Tem.
I don't want to go near the microphone, which could be a contaminated surface, so I'll sort of project. So assuming that we can still meet and gather, the Moderator and I would like to invite you to an Ask the Moderators workshop, which is going to be held on Thursday, March 19th, at 7:30 PM in the Com room. We did it last year. We had robust participation. It's an opportunity for any and all members to come and ask us any questions you want. You have a parliamentary procedure question, question about the budget, anything at all. We are there to answer your questions. And we also have a special guest making the rounds again will be the Assistant Town Clerk, Kimberly Spizano, and she is going to be talking about the role of the Town Clerk's Office and working with the RTM, and she's also going to show you some new features on the RTM website. So that is Thursday, the 19th, at 7:30. And then finally, I would strongly, strongly encourage anyone who has not done it to turn in your contact form to the Town Clerk's Office. We have a draft copy of the directory. The final copy will be ready as soon as we get everybody's contact information in and as soon as, the last thing we're waiting for is the Labor Contracts Committee to elect their officers. And once we have that in, you will all get a hard copy of the directory. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to remind all District Chairs that any members who were absent at our January meeting and have not been sworn in yet need to be sworn in before they can cast any votes, so kindly attend to that. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our January 21 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes stand adopted upon unanimous consent. All right, is there anything else that I have neglected before we get to the call? All right, that brings us to our agenda for tonight. I did notify our District and Committee Chairs over the weekend, taking into account the concerns that we have about prolonging unduly the duration of this meeting, that I intended to place on our consent calendar, based upon the overwhelming support by the Reviewing Committees, 24 of the 28 items. And those are all of the appointments and items 24, 25, and 26. So let me, well, let me ask, is there any objection to my designating those to be on the consent calendar? All right. So at this point, I will now place those 24 items on the consent calendar and all that pursuant to our rules, we do not hear committee reports or have discussion. So the only thing you will hear is what I am now going to say about these. First item that I will place on the consent calendar is Item 3, that is a resolution appointing Joseph Benoit to be the RTM Representative to the Harbor Management Commission for a Term Expiring December 31, 2021. Item 4 is a resolution appointing Joshua Brown to be a regular member of the Labor Contracts Committee, and these appointments to our internal committees are all for the term of the RTM. Item 5 is the appointment of Michael Basham to be a regular member of Labor Contracts. Item 6 is the appointment of Nancy Cooper to be a regular member of Labor Contracts. Item 7, the appointment of Brooks Harris to be a regular member of Labor Contracts. Item 8, the appointment of Lucia Jansen to Labor Contracts as a regular member. Item 9, the appointment of Dan Ozesmier to be a regular member of Labor Contracts. Item 10, the appointment of Michael Spilow to be a regular member of Labor Contracts. Item 11, the appointment of Moretha Hameray to be an alternate member of Labor Contracts. And Item 12, the appointment of Patricia Roberts to be an alternate member of Labor Contracts. The following are now all to Claims Committee. Again, the term is for the term, this current term of the RTM expiring December 31, 2021, or until replaced if continuing to be a member. Item 13, the appointment of Jane Weisbecker to be a regular member. Item 14, Kip Bergweger to be a regular member of Claims. Item 15, the appointment of Landon Canner to be a regular member of Claims. Item 16, Ed Dedakis as a regular member. Item 17, Katie Hines to be a regular member. Item 18, Rick Marganot as a regular member. Item 19, Patty Roberts to be a regular member. Item 20, Jane Sulich to be a regular member of Claims. Item 21, Greg Zorthian to be a regular member. Item 22, the appointment of Allison Walsh to be an alternate member. 23, the appointment of Hector Arzino to be an alternate member of Claims. Those are all of the appointments for tonight. I will further designate Item 24, and this is the approval of an appropriation of $14,550 relating to the Griff Harris Golf Course. I will also designate Item 25, which is the approval of an additional appropriation of $52,000 for the Griff Harris Golf Course. And the final item that I will designate for the consent calendar is Item 26, and this is the acceptance of a gift in an amount equal to the actual cost, not to exceed $200,000, from the Greenwich Point Conservancy and the Emily Catherine Fedorko Foundation to restore the historic chimes instrument in the tower down at Greenwich Point. And the RTM wishes to thank both the Greenwich Point Conservancy and the Emily Catherine Fedorko Foundation for the restoration of the chimes instrument and their continued support of that restoration. So that is the 24 items that I am designating for the consent calendar. Will the District Chairs please mark your voting cards, Consent Calendar Items 3 through 24, and proceed to poll your delegation? The remaining, I'm sorry, 24 items, 3 through 26. Thank you. All right, the remaining four items will be taken up separately. Beginning, we'll go in numerical order, beginning with Item Number 1. This is, this is an item that was before us in January and pursuant to our second read requirement was put off until this meeting. So Item 1, which is a proposed ordinance regarding an energy commission, is currently before us. May we have any committee reports? I think everyone is aware of procedurally what happened, why our committees did not take this up. Mr. Spilow, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Well, Public Works was informed that Ms. Sesto wished to withdraw the item and bring it back in April in substantially revised form. I believe there was a lot of feedback, and much of it has been incorporated, but not completely so yet, and that the item was going to come back in revised form and reintroduced in April. And until then, since my understanding of the rules are that once it was moved on the floor of the RTM, the RTM has to dispose of it, so it was suggested that this be postponed indefinitely so that it can come back in different form. That's what Public Works was informed, that it wished, the proponent wished the item postponed indefinitely. There was no discussion, and the motion to postpone indefinitely passed 12-0-0, so I guess I...
All right, I just see Mr. Basham waiting. Are you intending to report on this item, Mr. Basham? All right. So we'll await that report. Ms. Spilow, why don't you just wait here? Mike Basham, Chair of our Finance Committee.
We were also informed that Ms. Sesto planned, had asked that this be postponed indefinitely, with the understanding that the new ordinance, in different language, would be presented to us on the April call. As a result, we voted 11-0-0 to postpone indefinitely, and we had one District 6 was absent. Excuse me, District 4 was absent.
Thank you. Any further reports on Item 1? Allison Walsh, reporting for Labor Slave Minerals.
Hi. The Minnesota Rules took this, did not take this item up because we understood that it was going to be postponed until the next meeting, and so we just put it off for the next meeting. We didn't hear anything about postponing indefinitely.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We, the minutes reflect that we postponed to the next meeting, because we heard it was going to be postponed to the next meeting.
Your committee wants to offer a motion to postpone to April?
No, I don't want to make an offer a motion, I just want to report.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Spilow?
So Public Works hereby moves postpone Item Number 1 indefinitely.
All right, that being offered on behalf of one of our committees does not require a second discussion on that. Public Works motion to postpone Item 1 indefinitely, which has the effect of killing the item, and in order for it to come back before us, the proponents would start at the beginning. Any discussion on that motion? Because this is a procedural issue, I will call for a voice vote. If you are in favor of postponing indefinitely, meaning killing it tonight and having it start the process anew, you should vote in favor. If you want to continue to deal with it tonight, you should vote no. All those in favor of the motion to postpone Item 1 indefinitely, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yea.
That motion is carried. All right, at this point, it is my pleasure to invite our Moderator Pro Tem to the lectern,
Let's take a ride in the bench. You're a little messy in your workspace, by the way. Item 2, 682,503 appropriation for the MISA Building Committee is coming before us. May we have the resolution for Item Number 2, please? Peter Bernstein, Chairman of the Board of Education.
Thank you very much. Resolve that the sum of $682,503 be and the same is hereby appropriated for reserve from capital and non-recurring fund to account Z6801689, Project TBD for costs associated with the MISA building flood damage.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution?
No move.
The resolution has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item, beginning with, who's coming down? Michael Spilow, Chairman of the Public Works Committee.
Public Works met in joint session with Education and Finance. In attendance were Board of Ed Chair Bernstein, Superintendent Jones, Director of Facilities, Dan Watson. We were told that the funds requested would cover repairs for damages as well as replacement of remaining flexible joints. This is damages caused by the flood when a flexible joint failed. The repairs constituted $342,000 and the replacement $341,000. We were told the repair costs would be covered by insurance with $100,000 deductible and that the deductible would be, some of these responsibilities would be determined by some Risk Management Committee, I guess. We were also told that the replacement of the flexible joints was already in the current budget and that this would be removed from the budget before the budget comes before The Board of Ed and Administration could not answer questions regarding responsibility for the failures and referred us to the town attorney and the insurance company. The Board of Ed said that the joints were not replaced more quickly because, could not be replaced more quickly because this would require shutting down the heating system for the auditorium. However, there's no explanation really that I understood that, given for the delay between December 2018 and the first of these joints failed and January 2020. In any event, our committee voted 12-0 to approve this.
Thank you. Mr. Steven Rubin, Member of the Board of Education, I'm sorry, Member of the Education Committee.
You know, it's funny, all of our officers went bigger tonight. We tried to figure out Robert's Rules Order as the succession following them. Best thing we can do is whoever had the reason on him, so I got him. So I'm going to read you on Kim's report. On Monday, March 2nd, the Education Committee met jointly with the Finance and Public Works Committees to consider Item 2, the interim appropriation for repairs to GHS. The Board of Education is requesting an interim appropriation of $682,503 to cover flood damage caused by a burst plumbing connector and to replace all similar parts in GHS Performing Arts Center. The item was presented to us by the BOE's new COO, Sean O'Keefe, Superintendent Dr. Tony Jones, BOE Chair Peter Bernstein, and Director of Facilities, Dan Watson, were also there to answer questions. On Monday, January 20th, a flexible connection in the PAC heating system broke. Despite being discovered within a few minutes of the break, it caused damage to the ceilings, walls, and adjacent gym floor. This is the same part that failed last year, causing a similar flood. $341,000 of the request is to cover response and reconstruction of the damaged areas. $342,000 is to cover replacement of the remaining connectors, since it has been determined that these are incorrect parts for the facility and should probably never have been installed. Most of our discussion concerned the insurance situation and the plan for getting this repair and replacement worked done quickly before any other parts fail. We learned that our insurance will cover $341,000 repairable, less our $100,000 deductible. It will be up to the town to pursue claims against those involved in the design and construction of the PAC for the replacement work and our deductible costs. We were told that repair work on the cold water connectors, damaged walls, and floors can begin immediately. They won't be able to begin work on replacing parts that are part of the hot water system until they are able to shut down the GHS heating system when the weather is warmer. We also asked why we are dealing with a similar flood two years in a row. The BOE responded that after last year's connector failure, they asked the insurance company to cover the cost of replacing everything as preventative maintenance. The insurance company refused to cover this, and the BOE had asked for money in next year's capital budget to replace all the infected parts. The $342,000 for replacement is effectively being moved up from next year's capital budget so that the work can proceed as quickly as possible. We voted to approve this item, 11-1-0, with District 4 voting no. District 4 voted no, because he is concerned that we haven't learned the true cause of the issue and believes there are no guarantees that this appropriation will fully fix the problems. As a side note, I very rarely read aloud other than my grandchildren, and I practiced it a little bit this afternoon, and it's sort of like telling a story to a three-year-old. Thank you.
Thank you. I also, Mr. Basham, hang on for a second. I have the votes for the consent calendar. 165 in favor, 4 opposed, 9 abstentions. Those items have carried. Mr. Basham, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Not much more to add. The prior two gentlemen did a great job of covering what inspired our joint meeting. We voted 11-0-0 with District 4 absent to provide the interim appropriation. There wasn't reservations expressed in the committee's discussion. They didn't believe, it was the frustration that when we, the people were asked, why did this happen? Nobody could answer it to anyone's satisfaction. It was, well, there were a couple of different excuses given, and so I was asked to express that concern of the committee with that approach to answering the question. the question, and we suggested that there should be better communication between the RTM and the BOE, particularly considering the amount of capital they would like to spend over the next 15 years.
Thank you very much. Lynn McDaniel, could you come to the clerk's table, please, if you're here? Thank you. Discussion on item number two?
All questions.
Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards, item number two, and proceed to poll your delegation.
All right, I did forget to remind everybody, a big event in the Byrne family is the St. Patrick's Day Parade, done a great job of, yes, that is March 22nd at 2:00 PM. Fred, you gonna have your dog in the parade? All right. Two? One, great. And the grand marshal, none other than John Tonner. Let's hope we get weather like today, boy, that'll be fun. All right, while we are voting, we will continue with the business of the meeting. Item 27 now comes before us. Do we have a resolution on that item? Who's presenting item one? This is Nathaniel Witherall. Is there anyone to present it? All right, Alexis Vulgaris, who is Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
I'm giving a report, I don't know if I'm presenting it.
No, it just make, we just need it to be put before us. Doesn't have to be by anyone in particular.
Item number 27 is a $230,000 appropriation, interim appropriation for Nathaniel Witherall. I apologize to the town member because I wasn't.
All right, but it is the same as it appears on the call?
It is, yeah.
All right, will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 27 has been moved and seconded. We will now hear the reports on this, beginning with Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening, Health and Human Services, met last Tuesday, and we invited Mr. Simon, Chairman of the Witherall Board, to present this item to us. In the interest of keeping everything brief, it is a $230,000 interim appropriations slated to cover the following expenses that were recommended actually as a result of the bipartisan BET special committee report that was tasked, that was tasked with evaluating Witherall over the last term. Their final report was submitted in December of 2019. So roughly, $150,000 is for executive director services. Currently, they do not have an executive director, they're in the process of hiring one. They are using a representative who is affiliated with the Health Dimensions Group, which is the group that provided the consulting services when they were doing their study. That $150,000 is for a six-month period, although they anticipate that maybe by the end of March or beginning of April, they should have someone in that role. So the question is, if you're going to have somebody in three months, why do you need six months' worth of temporary salary? Because they also have needs in the Director of Nursing position and the Chief Financial Officer position. So any funds not used for the executive director position will be sort of allocated to those two other important core functions at the facility. $30,000 is for consulting services provided by HGG, that'll help maximize Medicare reimbursements. $25,000 is for cybersecurity, something that's critical. You have patients at HIPAA, so you want to make sure that there are no breaches with very sensitive medical information. And then another $25,000 is for accounting consulting fees, really making sure that the Witherall system, which is a matrix system, and the Town of Greenwich unis system can communicate together so that there are no monies lost or problems there. Our vote was 12-0-0 to support this interim appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Basham with the Finance Committee, report.
Larry Simon appeared before us that evening, and as I've said once before, it's always great, Father Galaxis, she gives a great personal report. He did present the various subgroups that the month is $230,000 is a go for, that we allocated for. I did ask, someone asked Mr. Simon how the existing consulting relationship with HDA, Health Dimensions Group, that is currently has an employee onsite helping, and he said she was very helpful, very helpful that they had, she had helped in reducing expenses and via improving Medicare reimbursement, hopefully income would be higher as well. We voted 9-2 to support the interim. The two districts that opposed it thought that if he was going to hire an executive director, that was expected to start approximately around April 1st, that we probably did not need the full $150,000 be allocated with that.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening. Since VOC voted unanimously to take up item number 27, given the VOC's ongoing serious concern with Nathaniel Witherall's management personnel issues as well as its financial shortfalls, that has required town subsidies far exceeding any projection given by Nathaniel Witherall's board. As those of you who have attended the VOC's workshop, over the years, our members have been actively engaged in listening and learning and the issues by attending many BET Nathaniel Witherall Subcommittee meetings, Nathaniel Witherall Board meetings, and recently the BET Department budget hearings. We discussed Nathaniel Witherall's $6.79 million in fiscal year 19 losses and our continuing in fiscal year 20. Over three years, these losses will be approximately $20 million. These losses would be higher if various in-kind items, such as the department services delivered by the town, are included that exceed $1 million per year, as well as including the full allocation for real estate costs. The interim appropriation request of $230,000 by Nathaniel Witherall's board and the first electman and BET's approval of this $237,000 is an admission that the facility needs outside skilled nursing facility experts and that our current town management is not able to take us through this. In fact, it was noted by Larry Simon, the Chairman of the Nathaniel Witherall Board, at a recent BET budget hearing and at various RTM committees, that the quality of HGG's work and impact has been quote-unquote remarkable, and the employees highly respect the consultant's insight and many ideas for improvement. The VOC had general frustration that the options described in the HGG report that has been delivered to the BET has not been actively taken, and we will be discussing this at a future date. In the meantime, for this particular interim appropriation, the VOC voted 11-1-0. District 12 voted no, since he felt the appropriation would pass, but wanted the vote to be a statement that, given the numerous long-term issues, it is time the town immediately look to professional management to run the nursing home. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 27. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards, item 27, and proceed to poll your delegation? Our last agenda item now comes before us, this is item 28. Who is presenting? Fred Camilla, our first elect.
Item 28, that the first electman is authorized to sign a scenic road approval form to accompany an Eastern Greenwich Preservation Association application to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 12 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee, with that report.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator.
Good evening.
Fellow members. By the way, I'm one-quarter Irish. So the Land Use Committee met jointly last Monday along with Public Works and Legislative and Rules to discuss this item, which is a scenic road designation. We had with us Amy Seabert, Commissioner of Public Works, Jim Michael, Deputy Commissioner, Katie DeLuca, our town planner, and John Wetmore, counsel with the Lot Department. The proponent of this item was Candace Garthwaite, who's a member of this RTM from District Six. She, but she was speaking on behalf of the Eastern Greenwich Preservation Association. The proposed route of this scenic road circles the Vinnie Park in Old Greenwich and Riverside. It would be the sixth scenic road designation and the first below-the-merit parkway. And later, it was mentioned that under our new plan of conservation and development, scenic roads are one of the key elements that are recommended to give a quote "sense of place," unquote. It's a primary guiding principle of our new Theo CD. So, just a, it was also mentioned a little later, but I'll mention it here, that this proposal was triggered, I believe, by the proposed project several years ago to redesign the traffic circle in front of the Parat Library and to raise the roadway. That was a project that was proposed by the Department of Public Works, and they had, and they spent $600,000 before requesting MI municipal improvement, and, and the MI was defeated by, by, at the Planning and Zoning Commission when many neighbors came and opposed it. So with that background in mind, this is a proposal to add a level of protection to that, to that road and to that area. The designation of scenic road and associated procedures are addressed in the Town Code, Chapter 11, Section 3, Article 3, Section 11, E. It require, the, the neighbors have obtained signatures of 11 of 13 abutting property owners, including the Parat Library and the First Congregational Church. Those signatures are required as part of the application process by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Because the proposed scenic road, road abuts Vinnie Park, which is a town property, the RTM is being asked to grant this permission for the first electman to submit, to submit this item over to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The, the, the code requires a majority, owners of a majority of lot frontage abutting the highway to, to sign off. So because the town is the owner of a majority of the lot frontage, the town's approval is necessary to complete the package. So that's why the RTM is being asked to sign off on this so that the first electman can refer this matter over to the Planning and Zoning Commission that has the authority to designate a scenic road. As part of the process, the, the neighbors have to, have to put up an application fee of $1,200. They're doing that, they, the neighbors are committed to this scenic road designation because of the beauty of the park and its views, its position as a gateway to Old Greenwich, and its historic features. So in our meeting, our Public Works Commissioner, Amy Seabert, and the Deputy Commissioner, Jim Michael, noted that the Public Works would now have to go through an additional step prior to undertaking work on the road and the right-of-way. Bridge replacements do not currently require MI, but if designated as a scenic road, they would have to go through the MI process. But, but this, the designation would not require approval by P and Z just for routine maintenance or repairs, or to repair watering breaks. Questions were posed regarding the proposed redesign, that prior project, what is the status of that current project, of that prior project? Commissioner Seabert noted that the state funding for that project is still available, but, but if, but at some point, it might not be. I'm trying to keep this one short. Town Planner Katie DeLuca noted that if.
Try harder.
The town planner Katie DeLuca noted that if scenic road designation is approved, bridge replacement would need to go through the MI process. Ms. Garthwaite noted that a scenic road designation would, would simply trigger a process that allows more understanding and communication when changes are proposed. So we got into the, under the scenic road designation, the standards involve that the proposed, the road must be free of intensive commercial development and intensive vehicular traffic, and that the road must be a half-mile in length. So we debated that issue. Ms. Garthwaite pointed out that, that the, although the volume on South Beach Avenue is high, the average of the roads included in the designation is far lower and, and a 24-hour cycle or even lower. John Wetmore from the Lot Department was asked for an opinion about intensive traffic. He noted that that's a state definition, and that we don't have the authority at the town level to change the, the code or the ordinance. But it will be up to the Planning and Zoning Commission to define that term and to make that decision. And whether or not the road is a half-mile long, similarly, that's an issue that the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to have to resolve. Our vote on this item, Land Use, was six in favor, four opposed. The nays included District One, who felt this was an end run around the process. District Four also agreed and voiced concern about that intensive traffic standard. District Nine felt we're spending too much time and effort due to language in the standard. District 11 noted concerns about unintended consequences. So once again, our vote was six in favor, four opposed.
Thank you. Catherine Lebalvo, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee. Allison Walsh giving the report for Legislative Rules.
Thank you. Yeah, Legislative Rules was in the same meeting with Land Use, the joint meeting with Land Use on this item. And when we broke out, I'm not going to repeat what we heard Mr. Berg said, when we broke out as Legislative Rules to discuss it, we discussed this really as, you know, it's really not the R, it's not, the RTM's not deciding anything about this, this designation, we're just, we're just, we're just a gating point for allowing the Eastern Greenwich Association access to planning and zoning. And so we voted 11-0-0 with District 10 absent.
Thank you. Catherine Lebalvo, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
We took this item up on Tuesday evening. We had Candace Garthwaite and Joseph. We had Candace Garthwaite and Joe Sisiliano with us. Candace representing, yeah, Eastern Greenwich residents, and Joe, the Director of Park and Recreation. The residents were seeking to apply to go before planning and zoning for a scenic road looping Binney Park. Ms. Garthwaite discussed landmark buildings such as the First Congregational Church, which celebrated 350 years since its founding in 2016. With its cemetery of founding families, she started listing Hendry Lockhart and Lockwood and so on and so forth, and then we'll go through them all. Dating back to -- she also noted the Cora Library dating back to the 1930s. She spoke of proposals that challenged the character of the existing road, recently the traffic circle brought on by our Public Works Department. By raising the elevation to mitigate flooding, they proposed to wipe out away possibly old growth trees, paths, and stone walls, which this scenic designation would seek to protect. A strong concern was put forth by delegates that such a designation could become a bureaucratic roadblock to allow residents to tie the town up in costly or frivolously legal action, to delay indisputably needed stormwater and flooding measures at and around Sound Beach. Should the road be designated scenic, it could bring the proposal of property owners before P&amp;Z, although repair and maintenance is allowable, and that was made clear. It was noted that no responsibility was seen from two households, although the number of attempts that they've made, those households were renters, but that all other households on the street, including the library and the Congregational Church, were in favor of this proposal. Further discussion clarified that this item would only be sent to P&amp;Z for them to determine the merits of the road designation. Roads and bridges do not go through MI, and while communication and transparency, it was noted, should be occurring, some districts felt that with the traffic circle, the public felt they lacked an opportunity for meaningful input, and they found it very concerning that that had happened. Delegates weighed that this would lengthen time for improvements and add meetings to proposed projects against the value of giving residents the ability to apply to the commission and request a formal public hearing process through P&amp;Z. Residents in the past were concerned finding their neighborhood landscapes and character and charm possibly changed without the opportunity for public hearing. The vote was 10-1-1. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Saleed, Chair of our Transportation Committee.
Hello. The Transportation Committee also had Candace Garthwaite and Alan Lovejoy. They are as guests to discuss the scenic road. We voted 10-0-0 with Districts Seven and Eight absent. Thank you.
And Michael Spilo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
I'll try not to repeat anything that was said before. So one issue with regarding to the traffic concern that was raised by a member, this was, we met in joint session with Legislative and Rules on land use on Monday, and you heard who was there. One member noted that the Sound Beach Avenue segment is the seventh most heavily trafficked road in town. You heard about the minimum requirement of a half-mile in length, the total meets, but the individual segments do not. Public Works resumed discussion of the item separately. The vote was 6-6-0, voting no where Districts Two, Three, Four, Nine, Eleven, and Twelve. Those opposed felt that the motivation of proponents had less to do with the scenic nature of the area and wanted primarily to prevent development of the proposed bridge and roundabout. Opponents also believed that the area does not qualify due to high traffic levels and wanted to avoid excessive encumbrance to this major town artery, regulatory encumbrance. Some were concerned that the needed bridge construction would be delayed and that this would impact emergency vehicle traffic through this area due to the frequent flooding of the intersection. And there was a concern that the decision regarding town-owned property should not be left to Planning and Zoning. Those voting yes that felt that this area was scenic and should be preserved as it is. Others believed mistakenly that the item would come back to the RTM after the P&amp;Z vote, and others wanted the encumbrances in place because they felt development often happens without sufficient involvement from local residents. Again, the vote was 6-6-0.
Thank you. I do have the result of the two votes that were pending. The first is Item 2, which is the appropriation for the MISA flood damage. Those in favor, 165. Opposed, nine, abstaining, six. Item 2 has carried. And Item 27 was the appropriation for Nathaniel Witherell. Those in favor, 145. Opposed, 28, abstaining, six. That item has carried. And I'd just like to note, the totals there show that our attendance tonight is over 181 out of our 230 members. Would you believe that there are some people who thought we wouldn't get a quorum tonight? I told them that we are a hardy bunch and that that was an impossibility. So thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you for your cooperation in moving the meeting along and not to prolonging it. All right, so we are on our final item. We do have speakers who have signed up. Discussion on Item 28. Candace Garthwaite, District Six.
Can I make a motion to limit the speech for three minutes?
After Ms. Garthwaite speaks, I'll call.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM. Candace Garthwaite, District Six. And thank you to the five committees and the twelve districts for your detailed reports and lively discussion on this item. So as you know, section, item number 28, the scenic road is before you because the designation procedure requires statements of approval by the owners of a majority of the abutting property so that we may submit the application. And this resolution asking the First Electman to sign is because Binney Park abuts, as you heard, the entire proposed scenic road, the loop around the northern section. The town of Greenwich owns the park, and therefore, the RTM as the legislative body of the town must authorize the First Electman to sign this statement so we can submit our application. He would be signing on behalf of the town as owner of the property, not as a decision-making authority. And so therefore, we could move forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the designating authority. And only Planning and Zoning has the authority to grant or deny a scenic road designation. And again, it's been mentioned, this is your Town Code, Chapter 11, Article 3, and starting with Section 11-8. So there are three main reasons to vote yes on this item. First, it supports Article 3 of the Municipal Code, in which the preamble states, "Scenic roads are irreplaceable resources," the destruction of which has had and will have an adverse impact on the town's historic and scenic heritage. And number two, the second reason, it serves the first guiding principle of the 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development. And that first guiding principle states, "To preserve our community character and sense of place." And reason number three, it recognizes the unique and iconic entryway into the historic village of Old Greenwich, the first settlement in our town, and therefore deserves recognition and protection of a scenic road designation. As has been mentioned, a scenic road designation is a tool available to residents when significant alterations and improvements are proposed on a scenic roadway. It allows residents a forum in front of the P&amp;Z for communication, clarification, and understanding of project impacts, and what alternatives have been considered or could be considered. It takes more than a village to protect a historic area. We have letters of support from the Historic District Commission, the Riverside Association, and the Preservation Network. The Old Greenwich Association sent us an email stating the board's support. 450 petition signers have asked that we stay in communication with them on this issue. Let's look back to look forward, and this was mentioned. Two years ago, the Department of Public Works proposed a large-scale rotary and road raise in addition to the Sound Beach bridge replacement. During one of those municipal improvement meetings, Planning and Zoning Commissioner asked Rita Baker, an abutting neighbor and me, if Sound Beach Avenue was a scenic road. It was not. We were not familiar with scenic roads, but we and other neighbors learned fast. In knocking on doors of Binney Park neighbors and talking to the Cora and First Church, we learned that there was tremendous neighborhood support for this recognition. And it is important to note that a scenic road designation does not alter the property rights of persons owning or occupying real property outside of the public right-of-way. As mentioned, we have the signatures of 11 of 13 property owners, the Cora Library and the First Congregational Church. All property owners received registered letters. With your approval of Item Number 28, we will have the approval of the owners of the majority of the lot frontage along the proposed scenic roadway, allowing us to pay the $1,200 fee and submit our application to P&amp;Z, the designating authority. Questions have been raised as to some of the designation standards. Because the authority to designate scenic roads has been little used, some of the terms, not defined in code or statute, are ambiguous and have not been tested. In particular, this particular item in Section 11-8-A, to be designated as a scenic road, a highway or portion thereof must be free of intensive commercial development and intensive vehicular traffic. It is the purview of the P&amp;Z to clarify and decide what this language means in this particular case. Furthermore, the application does require us to submit measurement of average traffic, and we do have traffic counts for the three roads, Sound Beach, Westham Wood, and Arch. And we will submit those averages to P&amp;Z for review. And there is that question about the loop, the contiguous loop of Westham Wood, Arch, and Sound Beach, and the question, does that qualify for a scenic road with its .6 length? These decisions on standards are solely in the authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission, who will take up the matter at a public hearing. So we want to go forward. We want to know. Yes, these are concerns, and they need to be analyzed and discussed and decided upon. There is also a concern about the passage of emergency vehicles on Sound Beach. This is an important question and deserving of careful deliberation in public hearings that include all the studies, engineering analysis, and potential solutions to flooding in this particular watershed location when significant alterations and improvements are proposed. The Connecticut Scenic Road Enabling Legislation was crafted in 1981. Greenwich adopted it in 1992. Communities do change in 30 and 40 years. In 2003, the state itself adopted new legislation for state roads, and that legislation does not mention intensive traffic. In 2016, Westport residents achieved state scenic road designation for Route 136 at the Stockituck Bridge going north to Route 1. And so, to summarize, the three reasons for your yes vote. Number one, the preamble of the legislation is that scenic roads are irreplaceable resources. Two, a scenic road designation is aligned with the 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development. The POCD states its mission in the first guiding principle, "Preserve our community character and sense of place." A neighbor wrote to us, "Old Greenwich really does have a sense of place. We can travel to other great towns or even countries, but as we come round the roundabout in front of the Parrot, then see the glory of Binney Park and the First Congregational Church, we know we're home." And the third reason for a yes vote is stated on page 41 of the POCD. Historic preservation is a key component of community character. This scenic loop is historic, beautiful, calming, and unique in the town of Greenwich. In a short segment of roadway, we have an epicenter of history. The First Congregational, you have heard, was the First Congregational Church was established in 1665, and the current stone meeting house built in 1895. The First Church Historic Graveyard contains the graves of Edwin Binney and his family, with so many other founding families. Binney Park was officially designated--
30 seconds.
--in 1933. So yes, on to the Parrot Library. We are asking for your support on the call item number 28 so we can submit this scenic road application to Planning and Zoning, the designating authority. We understand there are challenges ahead, and if we -- but yet, we are committed to moving forward with the application, so please vote yes.
Thank you. Stephen Rubin, District Three.
I'd like to make a motion to limit per speaker to three minutes.
All right. It has been moved and seconded to limit debate to three minutes per speaker. Motion, pardon me?
Second motion.
Yes, I said it had been moved and seconded to limit debate to three minutes per speaker. Motion to limit debate is now itself debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of limiting debate to three minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, so the three-minute limit is now in effect. We do, as I said, have a list of speakers. Ms. Fruman, I understand District Nine has a motion, is that correct?
Do you want that now?
Well, either way, why don't you let them know what's coming? I was alerted that there was a motion to postpone this indefinitely, and debate on that can go into the merits. So they might as well be aware of it if you want to make it now, we could be debating that, but at the same time, you may discuss the merits. All right, so Betsy Fruman, Chair of District Nine.
District Nine moves to postpone indefinitely Item 28. And I'm going to give you, since it's, we don't need a second.
All right, so you're going to make that now, so that being offered on behalf of one of our districts does not require a second. It is currently before us to postpone indefinitely, and we now know that is a motion to kill the item. Go ahead.
District Nine believes that it will be unclear to the general public what a yes vote on this item means. The RTM is the voice of the people, and we should always speak clearly. A yes vote would be misconstrued as an endorsement of the application itself. We therefore move to postpone this indefinitely so that a vote on this item cannot be misconstrued. Can I speak to this personally?
Yes.
So that was the district, what the district wanted to say. I believe this should have come before us in two parts. The first part is, are we in favor of this? And if we are, the second part would be asking our First Electman to take it to the Planning and Zoning. What we've heard today is that there is a great possibility that this would not pass over Planning and Zoning approval. And what will have, what our fear in District Nine is, that they will be dis-- And what will have, what our fear in District Nine is, that they will be discussing it, and they will say, "But the RTM wants this. The people of Greenwich want this." But that's not what we're voting on here. We're voting here only to allow the first selectmen to take it to P&amp;Z. So I think we have to be much more clear on what we're voting on, and possibly break it into two parts. So that was mine, the other was the district's.
All right, thank you. So, we do have, as I said, we do have a list of speakers. The motion to postpone indefinitely is debatable, and debate may go into the merits. So, I'm going to go through this list. I will first be calling for a vote on the motion to postpone indefinitely, so that our speakers are aware. And I remind our speakers that we have a three-minute limit in effect.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Kaner of District Twelve. I am also a member of Legislative and Rules and Claims. One of the things I enjoy about RTM is that we're always presented with new and different legal issues. A week ago, I didn't know anything about the legal requirements of a scenic road, but in connection with this, I have looked into it. And I see that we have national scenic roads, state scenic roads, and local scenic roads. The common theme seems to be the desire to preserve culturally, historically, and aesthetically significant roads. The preamble of the town code says that scenic roads are irreplaceable resources, the destruction of which has had and will have an adverse impact on the town's historic and scenic heritage. I think that having been a resident of Old Greenwich for many years, certainly Benny Park and that area is iconic, unique, and very significant to our community. So I think that this proposal clearly falls within the wording of the preamble of this section. The question is whether it is disqualified by the language that it's free of intensive vehicular traffic. I Googled state scenic roads, and I found, I got a list of seventy-five roads, many of which are much more heavily trafficked. State scenic roads include the Merritt Parkway from Greenwich to Stratford, significant portions of Route 1 in Madison and Old Lime, and as Candace said, parts of Route 136 in Westport. However, the statute which does involve state scenic roads has similar criteria, but not free of intensive traffic.
Thirty seconds.
So, I would support this. I think this is a laudable goal. It's done on the national state level. I think that we have an issue of what free of intensive traffic means, and the proper body to determine that is Planning and Zoning for this and from other parts of town in the future. So I would recommend that this be endorsed. Thank you.
Lucy Krasner, District Five, to be followed by Monica Prohoda, District Six.
I would urge everybody in this room to say yes to this particular item on our call this evening. If any of you are unfamiliar with this because you live in another part, you know, the far end of town, you're missing a treat. Every single day, I'm on this road, going into Old Greenwich, and it is special no matter what season we're in. It is truly incredible, and should be preserved in every way possible. It is truly the historic center of Greenwich, really. And to have it destroyed as many areas in town by overdevelopment have changed dramatically over the years. I also disagree considerably with District Nine's proposal to postpone indefinitely because it's not clear. We have had many votes in town where, in the RTM, where our moderator has said, "Now, I want you all to be very clear. A no really means yes, and a yes really means no to this item." That's not what we're seeing tonight. What we're seeing tonight, a yes vote, means we are in favor of this, and we urge our first selectmen to sign so that this can be presented to Planning and Zoning. It's very clear, and it's not that the public will be misled. The public will be very clear on what this is about. So, I think that that's basically what I wanted to say, and as we've heard Candace say, it really makes for transparency as to what changes our DPW work might be needed to be done in this area. Let us hear about it before, than the surprise of the giant rotary that was earlier proposed two years ago that would raise the road and block the view of the library. This is just such a stupendously beautiful area. We should do everything possible to preserve and protect it.
Monica Prohoda, to be followed by Catherine Lebalbo, District Two.
Mr. Moderator, this Krasner eloquent statement is what I was going to say.
Thank you.
So I urge everybody to vote yes.
Catherine Lebalbo, District Two, to be followed by Craig Amundson, District Twelve.
Good evening. I just very quickly wanted to note that Helen Binney Kitchell spent her legislative career in Hartford in 1931, fighting against billboards, fighting for scenic, preserving scenic roads of Connecticut from 1931 to 1939. I couldn't think of a road that would be more appropriate to bring our first road to south of the Merritt as a scenic road than this one. Please give the residents their day to go before P&amp;Z and to fight for the heritage of Old Greenwich, to fight for the heritage of Greenwich for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Amundson, to be followed by Leslie Ash Morrison.
Good evening. I'm Craig Amundson. I'm from District Twelve, and I'm also a member of the Public Works Committee. I guess I wanted to say first off, that in the past couple of years with the discussions in the roundabout, as well as other necessary repairs on this section of roadway, I've seen more divisive conversation in this body than I think is really warranted. I don't think anybody thinks this is an ugly area to drive through. It's a beautiful area. And I don't think that we're looking to do anything to really undo the scenic nature. What we are looking to do is be able to do proper repairs without inordinate, extra-bureaucratic delays. And unfortunately, that's what this scenic road designation is designed to do. By definition, the repair of the bridge, which is in awful shape, and while a few people have mentioned the potential problem with emergency equipment, what people are really not addressing is, yes, I'm in District Twelve, and what many of you may not know is that District Twelve, all the way up through Sheepville, is serviced by the Sound Beach Fire Company. In the event of flooding, which is prevalent, you know what happens there, in the event of flooding, an emergency personnel has to go through that, through that area. Our fire equipment is not allowed to go through flooded roadways. They must go another way. That way, for those of you who are not aware of it, is to go up West End Avenue and then go back through the Riverside residential area on Hendry. That would absolutely add minutes to response times up in our area, District Twelve. The fact that this proposal was already discussed informally with P&amp;Z, and P&amp;Z said they believe they have problems because of some of the wording in the, in the, in the section. Specifically, the idea about the size of the roadway. In order for a scenic road to be designated, it has to be at least six tenths of a mile. In this case, it is. All the way around the loop just makes .6 of a mile. The part of the language nobody's addressing is, it also says that at least one length of that route, which in this case encompasses three roadways, must be at least one half mile. The roadway does not fall.
Oh, I forgot. Thirty seconds, twenty seconds ago.
That's because I'm such a compelling speaker. Okay, so, on that, plus the fact that this particular area of roadway gets about fifteen thousand vehicles per day, it does not meet the non-intensive traffic area as well. I would, I have no problem with such a historic designation. I do have a problem with anything with delays, the work being done on this bridge, which could be deemed unpassable because of weight restrictions, and that's a threat to all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Leslie Ash Morrison, to be followed by Liz Paldunis.
Thank you all. I won't take my three minutes, and I won't repeat everything that everybody said, I hope. But I just wanted to say, I'm not here to debate the points that were just, just brought up right now. But I believe that, and I think we all believe, that the right place for a full and complete discussion and evaluation of this proposal is Planning and Zoning. That is the way our statutes are written. That is where it's deemed, they are the designating body for a scenic road, for a very good reason. It needs a full and open discussion. All of those questions can be answered in a full and open discussion, plus many more. There are lots of ways to think about flooding, and there are studies that have been done and ignored, and we would really like all of those to be looked at. So, that is primarily, I think, and I also think as far as District Nine, there's no confusion about this, as Lucy said. We're not actually asking you to vote whether you think this is a good idea to have a scenic road or not. We're actually asking you to let it go to Planning and Zoning, so that they can make the determination of whether this is a good idea. Your yes vote is simply allowing it to go to Planning and Zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Liz Paldunis, to be followed by Mike Spilow.
Liz Paldunis, Riverside resident and co-president of the Riverside Association. Our board took up this issue at our January meeting, and we agreed that this needs to follow a process, and the process is laid out that the P&amp;Z would opine on whether this should be a scenic road. I think everyone in this room can agree that Benny Park and the loop around it are probably, or maybe the crown jewel of Greenwich. It's certainly one of the most photographed places in town, and it deserves thoughtful planning for how we are going to improve the rotary, how we're going to raise the bridge, and maintain the sense of character for Old Greenwich and for Riverside, because Arch Street is a Riverside street. And I think there are solutions that can meet those safety requirements and maintain the sense of place that most people in town who participated in the POCD process over two years worked hard to make sure was included in that document. So, tonight's vote is really process-oriented. You're not opining whether you agree or not, but just letting residents go forward with an idea, and letting the right governmental entities as they exist in Greenwich make the right decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Spilow, to be followed by Aaron Leonard.
So, I have a couple of points. The first is that we are stewards of the town property. That's our role here. And in that role, we're voting as to whether we think we should support the adding of encumbrances to what is essentially town land. And so, if we vote in favor of this, I agree with District Nine that this would send a message that the town is in favor of this encumbrance. Separately, I would say that I have a lot of personal sympathy with the proponents of this item, having stood here many times, fighting against what one might call submarine projects coming out of the Public Works Department. And these are, you know, they, they travel along silently and then pop up fully formed at the last minute. And as citizens, we have a difficult time dealing with that occasionally. And so, however, that said, I don't think that the right approach to dealing with the submarine project problem is to create legal encumbrances for the town. I think the right approach is the one that I think the Public Works Department has taken more recently, which is to actually air these projects sooner. And they've done that very effectively with Glenville Road. They've done that with the Greenwich Avenue Streets Gate. And they've, in fact, done it here and allowed the residents to object to the rotary, and now they've brought the bridge project forward. And if the residents really hate the bridge project and have good reason for that, then we should deal with the bridge project and vote on that. Creating a separate scenic road designation, I oppose the intersection of North Street becoming a major commercial intersection a few years ago, you may remember. And I would not consider it appropriate to go back and say, "Okay, well, we don't want this ever changed, and so North Street should be a scenic road," because it has lots of trees and pretty houses and stone walls. And so, I, I would, I would generally say that we should not add the encumbrance to the town property, because some residents feel that a particular project there is inappropriate. Thank you.
You know, it's funny you mention the submarine popping up. Some of you may know, I monitor the Navy website for pictures, and this week they had video and a picture of a submarine breaking through the Arctic ice. Very cool. Navy dog milk.
I'm, I'm used to the concept from the Patent Office where there are things called submarine patents, which go unnoticed for many years and then come up later.
All right. Aaron Leonard, to be followed by Paul Poulierzi.
Good evening. I urge you to agree with District Nine. I think there's a lot of sensibility there. I think there is some confusion that this proposal is trying to do too many things. The term "tool" was used. Well, a screwdriver can use as a hammer, but it doesn't mean that it should be. I've heard multiple speakers talk about problems with the MI, concerns about how Planning and Zoning, pardon me, Department of Public Works, does things, and that sounds very legitimate to me. But we are failing in our duty as this town's legislative body, if we truly believe that is an issue, and we do not address it by trying to get a change to the way those things are considered. This proposal for a scenic road in no way addresses those concerns. It applies only to, obviously, a very small, very specific area. It does nothing to help the town as a whole. So if you believe that there are problems with the way DPW does things, this is not how you solve that. And the term "gatekeeper" was used, and that is often our role here in the RTM, but that is not what we do here tonight on this item. On this item, we are being asked the same question that the other property owners around Benny Park were asked. We are the property owners in this scenario, and that is what we are being asked tonight. So it's not about how lovely Benny Park is, but if we think a scenic road is something we want as the majority property owner around that area. And additionally, there were some criticisms made that the legal issues, which I think are not insignificant, are open questions that don't have definitions. But if we look to the state statute that it was inherited from, there are definitions. They refer to things like agricultural area, they refer to things like forest. And if you look at the other roads that have been designated in the town already as scenic roads, there, it is no coincidence that they are all north of the Merritt. I urge you, lock your devices you have, go onto Google Maps, and look at those roads. They are not downtown. They are not adjacent to the city, well, pardon me, the town centers we have here in Greenwich. That is entirely inappropriate for that area. Thank you for your time.
All right. And our final speaker from our signup list was Paul Poulierzi, resident of Olgrath.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, RTM members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. One of the things that wasn't mentioned was that the board of selectmen took a vote on this item. and voted to, in favor of moving this forward to you. I think that's important. Secondly, I've been on the Architecture Review Committee for many, many years and also started the Greenwich Preservation Trust. And in those two groups, I'm not speaking on behalf of the ARC tonight, but in those two groups, we're always discussing the issue of context. And it's not enough to preserve historic buildings. What we really need to do is preserve the context. That's what creates the sense of place. And this context in this part of Greenwich is one of the most important parts of our history. And I think we need to preserve it. We don't need to inhibit any future repairs or maintenance or even improvements to the roadways for safety and other reasons. All we're asking for is public input. In case you don't know, this bridge replacement that everyone's speaking of is an old stone bridge. It's in need of repair. But we don't know if we're getting a new stone bridge, or a new steel bridge, or a new concrete bridge because it doesn't require MI and it doesn't require Planning and Zoning oversight or public input. So I think that adding this layer of, I wouldn't call it an encumbrance. I would call it public input, is important for us because without it, it becomes the submarine that just appears and everyone says, "How did that happen?" Thank you.
All right. So that is the end of our signup list. I will now call for the vote, but as Lucy Krasner explained, this, I don't want anyone to be confused about this. I am calling for the vote on the District 9 motion to postpone indefinitely, which is a motion to kill the item. And it has the effect of reversing supporters from yes to no and those opposed to the item from no to yes. If you vote yes on this motion to postpone indefinitely, you are supporting the killing of this motion. If you vote no, you want to dispose of it in some other manner, and we would then continue taking it up, perhaps just taking a vote on the merits at that point. So will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards. District 9, motion to postpone item 28 indefinitely. Is everyone aware now? If you want to kill it, you vote yes. If you do not want to kill it, you vote no. And proceed to poll your delegation. That is the final item to come before us, so we will need to await the resolution of this vote before we can proceed further. So I ask our district chairs to please expedite the voting on this.
Yeah, Paul Ben, that's right. Yeah, the Ben-Ha. Remember the old building? That's probably where you were born. The old building? They said they were never going to build it. Actually, they replaced it.
All right. We have the result of the vote on the District 9 motion to postpone item 28 indefinitely. Those in favor, 85. Opposed, 88. Abstaining, 1. That motion has failed. So item 28 remains before us. Any further discussion on item 28? Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards. Item 28, proceed to poll your delegation. And just so everyone, hang on, please. We are now voting on the merits of what is on the call. If you are in favor of authorizing the first selectman to sign this application for scenic road designation, you should vote yes. If you are opposed to authorizing the first selectman to do so, you should vote no. We have the result of the vote on the merits of item 28. This is the scenic road authorization. Those in favor, 94. Opposed, 76. Abstaining, 3. That item is carried. That concludes business for tonight's meeting. And thank you all for coming out. Have a safe trip home.